You want to do it? All right. Okay. The girls want to sing the National Anthem. They know the words.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they know the words. We did it all the time with them.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? O'er the pines and boughs of thyme we went, O'er the carols of the lost boys and girls For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Off on your rocket.
And the wind, the most pristine air gave proof Through the night that our guide was still there. O'er the stars spangled in the same way For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Comments from the public at this time? There being no comments from the public at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, meeting of December 17.
Page two, very bottom, Mr. Mayor. Historical society deserves and says a commendation here. I don't think that was the word we wanted.
What was the word we should have had?
Well, recognition?
Maybe. We have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Make the motion accept the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills?
May I have additions or deletions in sequence?
Thank you, Marson.
Make the motion accept the bills. Is it?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence you have is given to the Rossus Point Village Court. It's regarding an audit requirement. The court, according to Uniform Justice Court Act, is required to present its records at least once a year to the auditing board of the village to be examined by the board or a certified public accountant or a public accountant. Our records are available to be audited. We implore you to view the village justice.
Do we need a motion to accept this? Make a motion to accept it?
No, we've got to make a motion to have the audit.
Make a motion to have the audit for the village in Portland.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Cost any money?
Certainly.
Depends what the board's pleasure is.
Depends what the board's pleasure is. That's right.
That should be in our budget, Marson, for this. It should be in their budget. I mean, this is done pretty much every year.
I think it's been a couple of years since we actually went out and played something to do with. You can't get away with the village board or something in the village board who's looking at the records. So, it's like. It depends what the board's pleasure is.
Well, we just take the motion to get it done, then we can decide at a later date, you know, whether this week, sit down and discuss it.
Well, can we go up now? Find out how much it is to get somebody to audit the book?
What's involved?
I totally agree to find out how much it is.
It has to be done. Yes, I know.
I feel as though as long as you just will sort out the records and see that they jive, make sure the bank statements are ready to sell every month, and it's not really.
So, it's something that one of us could do?
Yes.
Something that you can do especially.
I'll do it.
Okay. We should have to make that motion to do it.
And you're going to have to approve trustee Penfield to do it?
I make a motion that trustee Penfield be approved to audit the justice court for Rossus Point.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second piece of correspondence you have is addressed to the village clerk at a ride registered return receipt repressive. As I have applied to New York State Liquor Authority for a license to sell beer and wine at Old Times Cafe at 90 Lake Street, Rossus Point, New York. Sincerely, Senator bombarder fighter. This requires no action. We have two other pieces of correspondence which is not on your agenda because it arrived today. And seeing that this is very, these are both very nice pieces of correspondence, I would like to add them. One is addressed to Mr. Michael O'Brien, Rossus Point Recreation Center. It was a welcome addition for North Country Youth Hockey to have a second bin made for us by you and your staff. I personally thank a few of your staff at the Rides Center, but wanted everyone to know that we are very grateful for the bins and your efforts. It felt like Christmas when we went behind the stands to see how well everything fit into the two bins. We've had a great 2001, and we're getting ready to gear up for a busy 2002. As always, we look forward to working with you and your staff, especially during our busy tournaments and sectional season, which is just beginning. Again, we express our appreciation of your building the bin for our organization and allowing our youth program the opportunity to help the young skaters find their way onto the ice. You and your staff make our season a very enjoyable one, and for this, we are thankful for your help and support. Sincerely, Kathy Ashline, North Country Youth Hockey President.
Nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
We also today received word from Northeast Public Power Association regarding Mr. Timmy Clark. Timmy's doing very well in his classes. Both his academic score and his field and climbing score is excellent, and the comments are, Timmy's improving in every session, and he has an excellent attitude. This is from his instructor.
Very nice to hear.
And that's the end of the correspondence.
Thank you. Report of mayor and trustees. They have a resolution tonight. Do I have to read this whole thing back?
No, you just have to list the dates for village election, the date for village registration, and the place where it's going to be held.
Okay, the village election will be held March 19, 2002, right here in Alseth Hall.
Noon till nine.
Pardon?
Noon till nine.
From noon till nine. Okay. Registration will be March 9, 2002. Registration may be held at the village office of Rossus Point from 12 noon till 5:00 P.M. That's it, down the street. Is that it?
Yes.
You've got all the inspector holes.
No, that's next month.
Okay. All right. This has got to be a roll call vote on this, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I'll put that in form of motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Next thing on my agenda is the 2002 winter, Nikon winter meeting, held at the Omni, February 24th, 25th, and 26th. We put this off the last meeting. It's imperative that if.
Everybody's going to go. The registrations have to be sent in as soon as possible.
I plan on going.
I kind of like to, but I can't.
We have to approve for one.
Make a motion to the mayor to go to the Nikon winter meetings.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Last thing on my agenda is planning board, and I would like to see in the year 2002, sooner than later, a permanent planning board for the village, a permanent planning board, and operate something like the zoning board of appeals. You know, they meet regularly, and we'd like to see the residents of the village on this board. I'm throwing that out for discussion from anybody or any of the board members at this time. I believe it's imperative that we must do something since the last meeting, since Mr. Bechar presented us with his intentions to do with that piece of property over here, that we have a planning board that can work with these sort of things. We don't have much property to expand in here in the village, and I think with the planning board, we can look down the road five, 10, 15, maybe 20 years, what this village is going to look like and be like. That's my thoughts. I'd like to hear from the board.
I think there's going to be some, a lot of people coming to the village here. The way things are going, I know just from the federal government, there's going to be more people moving into the area, so we're going to need more housing. I like to spot down on the bridge row. Well, I was driving up there the other day looking, saying, boy, nice job developing the Dara houses. So, that's something that we could look at, I think, also.
The thing that got me, and I don't know if I brought it up to the full board, but two weeks ago, I was talking with the superintendent for water and storage in Peru, and down there, they, he told me that they had one area, a guy wanted to go in and develop, build homes, and he said the reason why is because of the implement of last year's lapse, that there is not homes available in the Rossus Point area. Those homes should be here.
There'd be like 200 people coming, too.
Well, they figured, they told us what, that 200, between next year and, right now, are 1,400 employees at Rossus Point, and there's over 250 at Jay-Z, and they're going to throw out another 250 next year.
So, this coming 2002.
Yeah, he's, what you would call it, managing director, Mr. Brooks, told me that he felt by the end of 2002 it'd be over 2,000 employees at last year's.
And if that's the case, I think it's really important, not just for new residents in the village, but just for what the appearance of the village is, any historical property we have, the quality of life of the residents that are here now. I mean, there's so many other important issues, even beyond whether or not we can provide housing for new people moving into the area. Very, very important.
I think we should consider, too, where Junior Ashline's property is. Eventually, that's going to be bought, hopefully, and developed into houses. That's a prime piece of real estate over there.
Well, it is, but.
Let's overlook that. Yeah.
We got, you know, we got a couple of things going. Trustee Hoprow's got a very, I won't say Rupert, but he's got a very ambitious plan to revitalize Main Street, and John's working very hard at that. So, that's, you know, dress up Main Street to make it look presentable. That's one thing. I still say the, our major concern is still going to be expansion. Where do we go? And how do we go about it? That's, I think, the main thing.
We need a plan.
If the board has no objection, I'm going to ask trustee Penfield to have that, to try to get citizens that are willing to sit down, come up with a plan, come up with a set of guidelines, whatever. That's all I have tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Trustee Menard.
I have nothing this evening. For rare cases.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Trustee Hoprow.
I've got too much to leave. The first thing I'd like to do is request an executive session to discuss select personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. A roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
You have a copy of the monthly water plant work report. Any questions? We also have the 2001 annual water system inspection report, and I had three questions on it, and that was on the findings, numbers two, number three, four, and five, two of them having to do with contact time, and the other having to do with most clean on the existing storage tank. I talked with Gary Wisk about it, and those things will all be addressed and taken care of at the new plant. There's really not a whole lot we can do about it until then. Other than that, the report really looks good, I think. You have something to do with that, Doug? Did you? Do you have something to do with that?
Oh, I know.
Think of that happen?
No, you've got a good plant there.
Yes, I appreciate we've got a good plant. Some good things are coming down. Let me see. Update on water projects. Finally, it's here.
It's my pleasure to take tonight off and introduce you to John.
As Doug is probably related, we are ready to go to bed on the contract for, contract number one, construction of the water storage tank. There's a draft advertisement that has been passed on to the village board, in addition to having that work ready to go to bed. Me and Doug met with Gary to review final details and the remaining work to be done. Today, we're at our, kind of a fine-tuning type of thing. We did identify a couple of things based on the county report on the annual water supply inspection. However, they were pretty well handled previously, but we did develop a few details and some implant piping with Gary, basically to make operations a bit more easier, or to observe what's actually going on that is visually verification will be a little easier. And we're also fine-tuning some instrumentation details. And because the state comprehensive performance evaluation had identified some potential problems with fluorination byproducts, I wanted to review in detail the injection points for new fluorine injection pumps with Gary. And I think we got that pretty well finalized now, so. The other things that were reviewed here today in the past couple of weeks, just some minor details and various little aspects of the project, and we would hope to have everything, all of Gary's and Doug's comments, pretty well incorporated by your next meeting, which would be.
22nd.
Is it 22nd, Dirk?
Yeah. The holiday.
The 21st is a holiday.
Oh, okay. With that in mind, the other things that we were finalizing, basically some instrumentation details. It's kind of hard from our end to finalize that stuff without a real sit-down and kind of walk over the plant type thing with Gary. So, with that in mind, we should have those plans and your specifications pretty well finished by, in two weeks. That will allow bidding the remaining three contracts and the last contract rehabbing the existing storage tank. There's a couple of questions we had on the internal workings of a valve down in the pit there. We were planning to put some pressure recorders on each side of this particular valve. We had some erratic readings previously. Just want to make sure we know what's going on there. We're planning to do that either late this week or early next week. Talked over those details with Gary, so we're in pretty good shape of that. Other work upcoming this month would be holding a pre-bid conference with the bidders on contract number one, and we have some miscellaneous funding submissions that still are being compiled by various people. And that's something that we submitted. In our advertisement for bid on contract one, the elevated water storage tank schedule that we were proposing was to advertise sometime convenient this week, perhaps as early as tomorrow or the day after, so it takes a day to give the thing in the paper. Having a pre-bid conference on January 31st, and receiving bids on February 12th. The, I guess, plans and specifications are completed at this stage, and I think it's, we're a real big sign to get this rolling. The remaining work takes quite a bit less time to build and finally establish the stuff. Questions?
Would you explain about the pressure? I didn't understand that. Are you saying there's different pressure before and after the valve?
Yes, that's exactly what it is. And we had a little, the fellows took some readings this summer, and we had kind of questioned them just a little bit. It seemed a little out of whack, and I think, talking back and forth with Gary, we know why, but what these little chart recorders do is just verify what's going on. There might be a little malfunction in that valve. It's called an altitude valve. It's in the base of the pit. It's been there since 1963, so instead of, it's not necessary to replace it, maybe we could eliminate the valve.
How much pressure are you talking at most here there? It's hundreds of pounds, or?
Oh, no. No, it's a difference between, oh, maybe 65 on one side and 70 on the other.
Should be the same on both, right?
Well, we don't really know exactly why that was put in there, other than the fact that typically you wouldn't have one in a system such as yours, but in this particular case, I think it's related to fire flow problems for the Harris plant right there. So, we just wanted to do just a little quick check on it, the fact that we're pretty sure we included it up there.
Maybe we should take it out, as you said.
Yeah, it's kind of a means, I think. If you don't need it, why have it? That's basically what we're talking about here.
63, we're talking about four years now.
Yeah, but they'll generally last fifteen, sixteen years if you don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Well, John, so, what we'd like to do is have the board resolve to go off a bid for contract number one.
Right. Pending the approval of the water plant operator at Paris, I would make a motion that we go bid on contract number one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote right then.
No. You're just authorizing the publication, the legal notice. When we authorize the actual bid, you will. But right now, you're only authorizing the legal notice.
Yeah, we're advertising the bid when we collect the bids.
No other discussion, and all in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. I would also like to authorize the bid on contract 2002-01 for interpretation served.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Number six, I would like to request an executive session to discuss the personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And finally, I had the pleasure of meeting with a lady this morning, thanks to clerk Deb Bechar, who is interested in opening a retail business in town. And all she wants is our support. I really can't go into any details at this point. We told her we were just getting to the board, and it's a clean retail business, and all she wants from us at this point is our support. And other than that, I don't feel as unauthorized to do anything publicly on that at this point.
No.
No, I don't think she'd have a problem if you did.
But I don't think it's going to be very long. We'll be, maybe by next meeting, we'll be able to say.
Motion to that.
Don't, yeah, I guess if we did have a motion.
Yes, you'd like that level of support to go through the brain.
So, put that in form of a motion.
Okay, second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one thing, John, just so that people don't get confused or whatever. We're not talking grocery stuff.
No, we're not talking grocery stuff.
Just so to clear that up and so people don't get their.
It is suggested she might want to put in a small supermarket.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Hoprow. Trustee Penfield.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
I have a couple of things tonight. The water was off on Mountain View last week, and they called me. I guess they had a valve that went out of Smith Street, so they fixed it, and then inadvertently, the water was turned off on Mountain View Boulevard, so we had one of the guys come out and turn it back on, restored the water, so the kids could take their bath. So, parents are happy on that. Okay, the first thing I need to do tonight is authorize the clerk to publish a notice at the next meeting for local law number one for 2002. Will we make a motion on that, Beth?
Yes, so I can publish a legal.
I'd like to make a motion to publish a legal notice on that.
That's on the sewer law.
On the sewer law, yeah.
All second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Doug, did you want to talk on the sewer plant, or?
No, I'm all set on the sewer plant. Do you want to cover it?
Yeah, I was down at the sewer plant the other day, and things are coming real good on that. We hope by the 1st of February that wet brothers will be done, and the painting will be done by February 15th. The contractors were hoping for the tentative date. The roof is on, everything is good. Bobby Clark was down the other day, and I met with Tommy and Bobby, and we went around, and they did a nice job. The roof looks good, and everybody's happy, and the budget, and we're not going to be overrun. It doesn't look like everything's on the line, so real happy to report on that. Just a couple other things that I want to talk about tonight. Just a couple other things that I want to talk about tonight. The, we don't want, I don't want to make a motion tonight about it, I just want to run it out to the board, because I've had a lot of people come and talk to me about it. And last week, when we passed the authorization to keep paying someone's health insurance, we only listed it for three months. And a lot of people have come to me, and village employees, and they're quite upset about it. I hope we didn't make a hasty decision. And I just want to just throw this out, a few things tonight, that we're spending taxpayers' money, you know, so first of all, we don't want to waste money in any place. I personally don't want to waste any money. But we've got to realize that the money that we are spending is taxpayers', and employees of the village are very valuable, but they're taxpayers'. And like, one of the guys said to me, what happens if I get hurt, and I'm out of work four, five, six months? And I'm really down in my luck, and my income has dropped drastically, and I've got to step in and pay my share of the health insurance? So, it's something I think that we should consider. I know Aris, it's six months, I believe. And at first, I didn't really realize how important it is, but there's a lot of people that don't have health insurance, and the people that do have it, they realize that it's very important. So, I don't want to make a motion tonight, but I'd like to bring it up for the next meeting, that maybe we should consider extending it from three months to four months, five months, or at the most, six months, or put a clause in there that we could reconsider it. Because everybody working for the village, you know, we don't want to cut their insurance out, we don't want to, you know, take their income away from them. So, this is something that we should consider for the next meeting. And we sold my dad's store, and they're going to make an apartment out of it. So we're raising the tax base, so I'm happy to report on that. And Georgia will have some good news to report next month, I believe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Now.
Yes, if anybody's wondering why we didn't advertise a tree pickup, it's because we've been picking them up since the day after Christmas. If anybody has a tree to be picked up, just put it in front of your house, and our public works guys will pick it up. And everybody knows that works for the village, that your budget papers are out. Everybody received them, there are dates on there. I hope that you'll make a big effort to abide by them, so that the board can start meeting. In February, we can work on this, and we won't be rushed at the last minute. That's all I have.
On the tree pickup, Beth, I think by the end of this week, we should be done picking up trees.
Yes, we should, because we've been picking them up since.
I think that's, you know, out of mind as a statement. Friday will be the last day we'll pick up trees.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing.
Bob?
Nothing.
Other Bob?
Nothing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
That's okay, just one thing. We're working with the DOT on Route 11, Route 9B upgrade that's coming in a couple of years. And so one of the questions we need answered by the board is, I know there's talk about the street lighting, and about getting some of those streetlights on the east side of Route 11, which means we're going to have to do some road crossings and whatnot. We'd like to be able to tell the DOT this month, or next month, whether or not we want to cross the road while they're doing that reconstruction. The sooner we get a decision made, the better our chances are of being able to put it in the least expensive way when they do the reconstruction. So would you guys please think about that? And do you understand what I'm talking about? Is everybody?
Where specifically, Doug?
Just right along Lake Street here, where you have those historic-looking streetlights on the west side of the street. If you'd like to have some of those on the east side of the street, Sandy's Gully side, then we're going to need to run conduit under the road. And it'd just be a lot cheaper to be able to dig a hole and lay the conduit down, than have to push underneath the road at each streetlight. And so if we have any chance of doing what they call an open cut, it's when they're doing reconstruction. And so we're putting together a village wish list for all the things we want to do while I've got the road torn up. And so this is a big question mark, are we going to have streetlights on the east side or not? So if you guys could wrestle with that one in a couple of weeks, give us some direction, we'd appreciate it.
Wouldn't be very much to run the conduit, so that we could, you know, if we decide later we want to do it.
You mean?
I mean, if we put the conduit in.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. You want to have the tube in there, and then you can throw wire through later. That's it, you want to get your pipe in the ground when you can.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Open meeting up to public at this time? Yeah? Vote yourself.
Since you're in the mood for support, Hometown Cable would use a little support right now, too. About five years ago, each of the boards in the area wrote a letter to Time Warner, pointing out the value of Hometown Cable to the community and so on. They're starting to get kind of, you know, difficult with me. So, as you, probably most of you know, you know, I lease that channel, I pay them for that channel. And more little stipulations and things that they throw in front of me makes it that much harder to stay in business. So, if the letter, if the board could write a letter supporting Hometown Cable, letting them know that the community values Hometown Cable, I'd appreciate it.
You know, Calvin, I think if they took that off the air, they might throw Time Warner right out of here.
I think, you know, the number of people they would lose would be crazy, but.
They just raise the rates up again.
And they don't realize the difference between me in business here and somebody in Syracuse, you know.
No, I understand.
Somebody in Syracuse got a lot of businesses to go to, I don't, so.
Well, I think we're in a good position to put some heat on them, Joe.
Motion approved.
Yeah. And the motion, we document a letter for the Time Warner.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by user's side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. See what that was.
Mercy.
I got us a good night.
Yeah. You've set the precedent already, John, so.
Bruce, I'm sorry.
The board, by the way, you shouldn't know, we've answered 307 ambulance calls last year, and the mileage on the ambulance is piling up twice as much as it did in the old ambulance. Of course, it's built better, it'll probably last longer, but they should be aware that it is piling up. And we answered 109 fire calls.
How many miles you got in ambulance, Richard?
Forty-nine thousand, 200, I think it turned.
Two years old.
And the old one has 99,000.
Everything's all up?
They just put all-new brakes on it. We had an electrical problem. It was fixed by Peterbilt, it was just a crossed wire. They fixed it today. It's in good shape.
Anybody come to you and offered any money for that fire truck or anything?
No, no. Santa did not stop. The salesman called, said they got all kinds of deals out there, but I haven't answered them, because you got the first, you got the money and.
Any low-interest money thing, or anything?
I did read something, or hear something on the internet today, but I hadn't followed it up yet.
Come to us first with some cheap interest, boy, we'll have a deal for you.
Anything else? Open to the public this time? Nobody there? We are motion for recess.
Yes.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're in recess at 7:35.